Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming along to this Friday morning session on management practices in the UK. On Monday, we published the key findings from the latest third Management and Expectation Survey. And my colleague Reese will be talking about that in a moment. I probably should introduce myself as well. I'm Grant Fitz and Chief Economist at the Office for National Statistics. And it's been one of my privileges to oversee the work on this survey and indeed another survey that very similar to the Management and Expectation Survey that is currently out in the field of public sector organisations. The first time so far, as I'm aware, that there's been a large scale social survey of management practices in the public sector. We're certainly also really looking forward to those results which will coming out later in the year. And they're part of our broader work on the Public Services Productivity Review about which some of you may have heard. But again, there'll be more details of that as we publish those findings. But today, the focus is very much on the black box, that is, the British firm, what's going on, what are they actually doing? And what does it all mean for things that we care about like growth, jobs, productivity and innovation, really important topics? I do have a bit of a history in this area and without going into an extended biography, one of the first jobs I had when I left HSBC and joined the civil service in Britain was managing the Workplace Employment Relations Survey, WERS, something which has kind of led to hundreds of really interesting pieces of academic research. And I think plugged a gap in the evidence base. And it always struck me that not continuing that survey was probably a mistake on the part of government. It kind of really did leave a gap to which actually the Management and Expectation Survey has helped to fill. So 20 years later, here we are with the third in the MES survey. And I will now hand over to Reese to take us through the key findings, just in terms of how we're going to run this event. We'll have some questions immediately after Reese. So if people watching have any questions in the room, just raise your hand. And if you're online, just use Slido. We'll try and cover some of those and then go on to the three other presenters who'll be responding to those results and have some thoughts of their own. And then we'll have the main Q and A session after the four presentations. Over to you, Reese.
Is the mic working? All good? Great. Thank you very much, Grant. And as you said, I'll be taking you all through the initial results from our third wave of the Management and Practices Survey, which we published on Monday. I can signpost you to the bulletin afterwards, if you are interested in what I'm speaking about. So yeah, this is third wave. We've previously run waves in 2017 and 2020. 2017 looked at management practices in 2016. That's the 2020 wave because of its impact by COVID. Look at both 2019 and 2020. And one thing to note as well is that we've expanded this survey to Cavanagh, Northern Ireland for the very first time. So I won't go into the literature too much, but research has really exploded in this area. And it's shown that management really matters. When you look at firm structured management practices are strongly correlated with all sorts of firm level indicators, whether it be productivity, profits, innovation or survival. The MES was designed in collaboration with ASCO. And as such, it's very important to us that we make it available to researchers. So the MES dataset is available on the SRS, the UK Data Service. And we hope to get the 2023 wave into the SRS as soon as possible, looking to start in the summer, late summer. So just to give you a bit of an idea of this, the survey, my coverage, we cover 53,000 private sector organisations. We had an achieved response rate of about 27% because it is voluntary survey. So we're pretty happy with that one. We exclude firms in agriculture, financial insurance services and public sector organisations. We're also only interested in firms with 10 or fewer employees. So we draw our survey sample mainly from past respondents to the MES and to past respondents from the most recent wave of the annual business survey. We draw from the MES in order to get kind of a longitudinal picture. And we draw from the ABS that we can bring in other variables such as productivity and turnover and all sorts of interesting stuff that we can do linked analysis with. On top of that, we draw from the IDBR to make sure that the survey is representative. So in this wave, as we asked respondents about their business characteristics, their management practices, their expectations about their own turnover, their spending, the capital expenditure. And in this wave, we've added two new modules on learning and training and the use of AI and technology. So what I'll be focusing on the first half of the presentation is on this concept called the Management Score, of Management Practices Score. Building on the work of Nick Bloom, Rafaela Sedun and John Manrenan, as well as many others. We derive a management score based on continuous improvement, key performance indicators, targets and employment practices. So there are 16 questions in our survey and from the answers that firms have to be surveys, we drive a score between 1, 0 to 1. So firm score zero, if they don't respond at all to any ongoing problems, the base promotion decisions on factors other than merit, or they don't promote at all. They do not track performance and they do not set targets. On the other hand, then firm score one, if they continuously review their management practices, their processes, aim to minimise future challenges, that carry out regular performance reviews. They train employees and base hiring and promotion decisions on merit. So now, yeah, I'll take you through the headline results from our bulletin. So I said before, we look at 2016, 2019, 2020 and 2023. What's striking and you'll notice is a large improvement between 2020 and 2023. This obviously jumps out especially as the distribution is so flat between 2016 and 2020. We noticed that much of the improvement has come of the left tail of the distribution. And we know the highest kind of growth in management practices is at the lower deciles of the management practice distribution. We also in the bulletin show this chart for the linked sample and they suppose are firms that responded to all three waves of the survey. And it's a very similar result, albeit slightly shifted to right, as firms, really firms who've responded to three voluntary surveys are likely to be better managed. So we wanted to dig down into why exactly management practices have improved between 2020 and 2023. It's quite a striking result. So I'm just going to return to the concept of the four management practices pillars that I mentioned earlier. What you'll notice, first of all, I think is that firm score highest in continuous improvement, they score lowest in KPIs. But for those two concepts and the target pillar, there's not much movement between 2016, 2020 and 2023. What you do notice is this jump in 2023 employment practices, which also then drives the increase in the overall score. So when we dig down into the questions underlying the employment practices portion of the questionnaire, we notice improvements across four of the scoring questions. So these questions related to how firms deal with promotion amongst both managers and non-managers. And how do firms deal with underperformance among managers and non-managers? So when asked on promotion, firms were much less likely to say that they didn't promote at all, or that when they did promote, they promoted on factors other than merit. So they were more likely to say that they promoted the best people within their firms and that held for managers and non-managers. And on end performance, firms are much less likely to say that there was no underperformance at all, or that they did not deal with underperformance. I think a tentative conclusion we're drawing from this is that the tight-laid marketing conditions in 2023 led firms to have to deal with problems amongst employment practices within the firm, because they cannot rely on either promoting from outside or firing and hiring poor performing staff. But this is an area of that we're looking to do more research on in the coming months. So we also break down management practices by firm size, industry and region. These are results that have been kind of common to literature and common to the other publications of the ONS, published on this topic from previous waves. We find that larger firms have, on average, much higher management practice scores as a kind of step change as you go through different employment size bands. When we look at the industry picture, we find that service sector firms have higher management practice scores than production sector firms. The lowest mean management scores are found in non-manufacturing production industries and the construction industries. There's no kind of higher tail of firms with lower management scores in those sectors. Then management scores are highest in business services and other services. So other services include stuff like the private healthcare and private education, as well as ICT, which we observe has the highest management score amongst all services. On the regional picture, we find that the highest management scores are in London, the east of England and the south east. The lowest management scores in Scotland and Northern Ireland. However, between 2016, 2020 and 2023, we observe improvements in management scores across all regions. The highest increases in Wales and East of England between 2020 and 2023. So presented the unconditional means. So we also wanted to analyse what happens to management scores when you can control all sorts of firm characteristics. So here I present results from a regression where we regress on labour productivity, the firm characteristics and the previous slides and a few other characteristics such as age, ownership, yeah, age, family ownership and foreign ownership. So what you'll notice is that the results about larger firms being, having higher management scores holds when you control for all sorts of things. We present here two confidence intervals. We've tested a range of different standard errors and we present here the widest and the tightest confidence intervals. And we find that, you know, even when you kind of have the strictest assumptions about your standard errors, firm size is significant. We observe as well a nonlinear relationship between age and management practice scores. We find that firms between six and 25 years of age are, on average, better managed than firms of zero to five years of age. I have to apologise about the slides are slightly wrong, the age and number of employees comparisons should be switched. And then we also observe what is a very common finding in literature is that labour productivity and management practice scores are significantly correlated. So a 0.01, so a 1% increase in productivity is correlated with 0.01 increase in management practice scores. However, when we look then at region and industry, we find a bit more of a mixed bag. So in industry, we find that the relationship, the differences in management practice scores between industries are quite, are significant for most sectors. We find that services are, on average, are more of high management practice scores than the non-manufacturing production sector. More of a mixed bag when it comes to manufacturing and the distribution and accommodation industry. And then on region, depending on your assumptions about your standard areas, you get a wide range of differences. So we think that much of the differences that we presented in the regional picture don't bear out once you start controlling for other factors. But that is another area of more research. So a part of the survey we are interested in is how firms respond to management issues and whether they seek to improve themselves. And so we've asked questions on how, what do managers commonly do to improve the way that businesses are managed? And here we find a relationship with the responses at the population mean and also at the top decile and bottom decile of our management practice of distribution. The first finding is that close to 90% of firms are taking some action at least to improve the quality of their management. However, this is very different when you look at the bottom and the top of the distribution. So at the bottom decile, close to 50% of firms say that they don't do anything at all. Whereas practically no firms in the top decile of management practices say that they don't do anything. We find that the most common course of action that firms take is that they consult their own employees about areas of improvement. And failing that, and kind of an excellent common one is to go for formal training online or in person, or to conduct their own experiment, experimental changes. We find that better firms at the top of management practice distribution are more likely to do most of these options. And then I think the last thing to note here is that government funded training and hiring management consultants is the least taken option. We also ask about barriers to change and why firms say they struggle to improve the way businesses managed. We find that the most common response is that firms have too little time or that they say that there are no barriers. Interestingly, these findings can hold across the deciles. We don't find that the responses of those at the top and the bottom of the distribution are very different. So this is also an interesting finding. And then we're also interested in how management practices relate to the use of technology. And especially, so picked up here, data analysis and AI, but we've also asked about adoption of more complex technologies and softwares, which we'll expand upon in a computer analysis. So looking at data analysis itself, we find that again, firms at the top decile are far more likely to be doing, making use of data analysis in their key business decisions. And again, we find that firms at the bottom of the distribution are far more likely to save by these little to no analysis in decision making. Very striking difference between the dark blue and the kind of purpley line. So we know firms with below median management scores are four times more likely to use little to no analysis. So that holds for just the bottom 50, comparing the bottom 50 and the top 50% of firms. So it's quite stark. I think this is the last chart I've got to show. This is on adoption of AI. So we see in the, the, the ONS colour scheme here is terrible. The green and the dark blue lines is where firms say they have either tested or adopted artificial intelligence in their analysis. We find that across the whole sample, one in six businesses say that they have tested or adopted AI in 2023. But again, there's a stark difference between bottom deciles and the top deciles of management practice scores. So only one in 33 firms in the bottom decile have tested or adopted AI. When it closes to over one in three firms at the top decile have done the same. Better managed firms also far more likely to identify AI as being relevant. So you can see close to 75% of firms in the bottom decile say that they don't think the technology is applicable, which is a very interesting kind of differences in responses to that question. So just to conclude, scores have improved between 2020 and 2023. This is driven by improvement in the scores of firms of a kind of a left tail of distribution. And those increases are really strongly related to employment practices. Firms in service sectors have higher management scores than both in production sector, larger firms have higher management practice scores. And we found that UK firms are very much interested in taking action to improve management quality. And lastly, just on AI, yeah, 17% of firms have adopted or tested some form of artificial intelligence. Lastly, I just want to mention the Public Sector Management Practices Survey. So the first wave of the PSMPS is live in the field as of 26th April. We've gone out to 14,000 public sector organisations. So as well as research into the private sector, we are picking up on research that has looked into management in the public sector. And crucially, the PSMPS has asked very, very similar questions to the MES, which allow for comparisons between the public and private sector. So I'll leave it there and I'll open up to any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reese. So as I mentioned, we've got time for a couple of questions. So let's start in the room. Does anyone have a question for Reese? Yes, Catherine.
Yeah, thanks, Reese. Catherine Kent from Office for National Statistics. Really interesting research. I had a question, construction. So that seemed to have a lower management score. That also came up in Wednesday's plenary as being particularly low productivity. So I was wondering if you'd done any further research into the management of the construction industry?
We haven't, the data is very fresh. So we only closed the survey in mid-March. So it's very much a first cut of the data, but we are very interested in kind of the industry picture. I think what you know about construction is very widely, you've got very high management practices there. I imagine there's something to do with management firms, construction firms being smaller on average than other sectors. So if controlling for that, I think controlling for that, you still see lower than average firm. So it is very interesting. Yeah, area we can look into more.
Okay, thank you. I've got one on Slido, Reese. How big was your survey sample and were all sectors included?
Yes, I think one of the early slides, we have 53,000 firms in the sample, about 14,500 responded. And we exclude only agriculture and finance. I think that's a legacy of the first MES being drawn from the ABS, which also excludes those sectors.
Thank you. So apologies for the farmers in the audience who are online.
Hi, thank you. I said Smeen Farukh from the ONS as well. I wanted to quickly ask you about the management confidence score. Would you mind taking a moment just to explain how you derived that and how you applied the weightings to be able to come up with the final statement?
So yeah, so were you asking about the weights specifically or how the score? Weight. Yeah. So we draw from the IDBR, the ABS and the MES. So firms that came in through the management, previous management surveys, they only represent, we consider that they only represent themselves. So we believe that they probably have, we judge that they have a higher management scores than the average firm. We then give weights of more than one to firms coming in from the ABS or from the IDBR. And we take the weights given to them in the ABS. And we take the inverse of that as our selection probability and that gives us the weights. We then constrain, we do the same from the IDBR, my strata. So you get, we take the small N number of firms from that strata and divided by big N, the number of firms in that strata, and the inverse of that is the weight we give them. But then we have to constrain for each firm's weight to the total number of firms that the IDBR says is in that strata. So we end up with a kind of a sample of representing a universe of about 280,000 firms, but a wide range of weights within that. So yeah, so we aim not to over, over represent firms that we think have higher management scores of those being ones from previous waves.
I'm going to abuse the chair's liberty and just ask a follow-up then question then. Isn't it likely that firms with higher management practice scores are also more likely to complete the survey? And how do we adjust for that potential bias?
We only adjust for non-response, but it is something, especially when we look at the longitude and all that, it's something we're definitely going to have to address. I'm not a weight expert, but I've been, it's something that's definitely.
No doubt there'll be more in the user's guide when we publish the dataset. We do actually have one, time for one more or two more questions, but I'm going to go up the back.
Hi, Michael Francis from the University of Manchester. It was really interesting survey. I just wanted to ask about the kind of skills training aspect of it. What we often see in some of the surveys on an individual level is that training volume per employee is actually kind of declined a lot in terms of the duration and kind of quality of the training that they get. And I was wondering if there was kind of any consideration given to kind of the quality and duration dimension of the kind of formal training that they're getting as opposed to just, you know, are they providing it kind of thing? Because we sometimes see a disconnect there between the kind of employer response and what's happening on the individual firm specific kind of human capital accumulation.
I apologize after this point, you know, we don't ask about quality of training, but that is certainly something future surveys may be able to pick up.
Yeah, thank you. Just my question about, have you taken care about the length of management? I mean, here I'm asking about the experience of management as well, also the employee experience. And also my question about how long that survey has been taken? And as you mentioned, the response around 60% from the total of the sample or?
The response rate was 27%. Then we don't ask about length of service as management, but we do ask about whether managers have degrees or other qualifications. So that could proxy for experience in our analysis.
One more question.
Thanks. Aloisius from Treasury. Quick follow-up to the two questions down there. So how confident can we be in minimising that effect of repeated respondents just getting better at answering the questions rather than actual improvement?
So the repeated ones make up a small portion of our final achieved sample. But we do, yeah, we minimise the weight. So we give greater weights to firms that have come in for the first time. So but we hope when it comes to kind of weighted averages across, then we're not picking up just people getting better. We do publish the questions online, but then I don't think they're well picked up by firms. We don't, we don't link them, any of that documentation when we, this is it goes out to them. So I think the fact is small, but it's something when we do, if we were to do longitudinal weights is key to eliminating any of the bias.
Thanks. I'm going to hand over to our next speaker, James Fitz from Nesta.
Okay, oops. I'm skipping all the way along here. Let's go back. There you go. So hi, hi everybody. Yeah, James Fitz on the Innovation Growth Lab based at Nesta and the Barcelona School of Economics. So just as quick background, so you kind of get an idea for where I'm coming from. So I, as I say, kind of Innovation Growth Lab, based in economics, we kind of work with policymakers, researchers, practitioners, trying to get business innovation policy more experimental, more evidence-based, trying new ideas, testing things and learning. We do a lot of work with international policy organisations, including quite a few in the UK and others. So yeah, and you know, as I say, we do lots of kind of stuff around an area of work within that is how do you encourage smaller businesses, large businesses to adopt and improve management practices, new technologies? And we've done the kind of various bits and pieces of kind of like helping people to run experiments, trying to bring the evidence together and just try and give researchers out there who are doing really cool stuff a voice and some policy influence. So the stuff we do basically in this area, feel free to have a look at it later on, but just giving the idea about it's kind of trying new ideas, testing it. So one of the things I hear is about the value of this research, what it means, how it might be used and I guess some of the risks and challenges when you do so. So I think a really good thing is, you know, better evidence, more effective policies. The Management Expectation Survey, you know, is definitely kind of a lot better evidence. And it gives, I think, a kind of a target that people want to reach. Raising productivity is a huge challenge, global challenge. And it kind of says here, if you get businesses to have better management practices, you're likely to get better, you know, raise productivity, brilliant. There's a target. Let's go for it. Okay, there's our target. So what you might think is, okay, right, if I can go out there and find some of these businesses who don't have these management practices and I can just get them to tick the boxes and start doing it, I'm going to get greater productivity, all as a winner. So that's kind of like, you know, you see that, I think, straight away, let's do that. Of course, in reality, you know, this is rarely that straightforward. It'd be nice if it was, but I certainly would not have been trying to play around with this for quite a long time. So in reality, it's a lot more difficult, just trying to actually have a step before this, trying to find the people out there. So there's one thing the ONS doing it, but you know, for a delivery partners out there, unlucky, the ONS will not give you the names and numbers of the people who don't have the practices unless it's changed. No, okay. So you still can't get those businesses and go out there and knock on the, although you can, you send them feedback sometimes, anyway. But you can't, there's a. But you can't as a delivery person, if you are, or a researcher trying to test it, you can't find them, you can't knock on the door and ask it. And if you did, then trying to get them to change and improve those management practices is going to be difficult. And then even if you do do that, how would you know it's actually going to lead to the productivity you want? Various reasons why it may or may not. Anyway, so that's why it's kind of more difficult in practice to do it. Okay, expand on that slightly. One of the reasons why, you know, there are many more things that they could have managed, that they could have measured already, there's questions around quality of training and various bits and pieces, lots of things you could measure. So there's other things out there that could be done, but maybe are important, maybe not so important for making those changes. And I've seen management quality, is there more than just the practices? There's also things like leadership, entrepreneurship strategy, you know, I think they've done research that shows a correlation between these. But, you know, again, there's more things you can measure. And there are interactions already between these practices, the technologies, but also the things like where do you get information from? Who do you talk to? You can see these connections between it and what's the important bit? Do you need all of them or some of them to make the change? Again, it's difficult. And the debt for the information, there's stuff out here, you can see the gaps, but like you've got a bit of an indication about why. But, you know, what's the need of that particular business to barriers they face, the opportunities for them to improve? How could they do it? Lots more information you'd ideally like. So, you know, but that's just, just, that's just how it is. There's only so much time to have a question. I put this one in, make kind of links to that. Just because I saw this in some research by David McKenzie and Stephen Anderson, they did this kind of research, a trial, looking at how do we get businesses to improve their technologies? And it really struck me is because they have this kind of, who is responsible in your business for doing certain things? And they have this kind of like, who's responsible for looking after your firm account? Who's responsible for marketing? And they asked other questions. And they get this nice crossover of when it switches between from the single owner or leader to somebody else in the business. And it kind of dawned on me, why I ran loads of business surveys and never asked that. And also I've done loads of times, I used to be, my team's been talked for the estimated business population. And we used to say, oh, ten, micro, forty nine, fifty, medium and so on. Why? Because I've just always done it, everybody else does it. This is a nice kind of way about where you might start looking for thresholds and changes. When do you start moving from someone, you know, when the size matter for who does the accounts, when the size matter for different management practices? So knowing that, I think, is really interesting. This is a survey of businesses in Kenya, so maybe not representative for yourselves. If you're going to target businesses and think twenties, the crossover, or ten here, on the left hand side it was, which I thought brilliant, that's justification for our micro definition. But anyway, so that's one reason why it kind of gets difficult. Another reason is because, again, it tells you if and how, you know, so it doesn't tell you if and how they might drive those improvements. Doesn't tell you as a policymaker, how are you going to bring about the change? Nor does it tell you the impacts if they do. So you can see the one, the correlation between those who do do it. But does it actually tell you what will be the impact if you get that management, if you employ those employment practices of some new sets of businesses? Why is that? Well, because often these interventions, you've got no guarantee of success. Lots of interventions, we try to try and improve these management practices, but they don't always work out. Some successes, but there's also some failures. Again, this kind of linked to the previous question, and I think, you know, the, sorry, previous things I was pointing out is that it seems relatively clear. It's like practices do them higher productivity, but again, the closer you get, the more messy it gets in practice. There's reasons why they don't do it or how they can implement it and so on. So when you get closer to it, it gets much more complicated to think about how you actually are going to bring about that change. Again, it's like, you know, you've got, you're closer than you were before, because you know it matters. But actually, how you bring back the change is still there to work on. And again, there's this challenge of how do you find, actually find the people and engage them? And I think this challenge of engaging the businesses, quite a lot of the programs that are out there trying to encourage management practices, they, it is difficult to find them. It's difficult to kind of like find a way to kind of motivate them, encourage them to come forward. Similarly, just trying to get them to respond to these surveys is difficult, it's a challenge, and that's a real, and I think that's sometimes overlooked. And they got, you know, the what works evidence base, you know, there is evidence out there. If you look at some of the reviews about what works center, they'll show you enough that you can do something in this area. It can be effective, but it's still very thin. You know, it doesn't really get you to the bottom of what's the best approach, what's the likely trade offs? And what's most cost effective? A lot more evidence needs to be gathered. And there's no real kind of guaranteed winners, something that works in one context doesn't work somewhere else. The devil's often in the details. And I think the combination of you, you know, trying to bring about the change, but also the business themselves, it's not often not what you do, it's the way that you do it. So it can be the way that you kind of deliver a program, the way you engage the businesses, the way that that particular business looks, how do they implement training? How they train employees, but how do they embed that in their business? What the steps that they make, what else do they do that actually probably matters as much as the fact that they are doing the training? There's nice correlation between the two, but it's not just about adopting a practice, not just about delivering a set of training. It's sometimes a particular element of it that really makes a difference. And I mean, just to kind of think about, he says, you know, where does this feeling come from? You know, let's say I worked on this area about twenty odd years ago. And and I think, you know, the quality evidence improved quite a lot. Particularly management expectation service is a great one, because it kind of moves from what was very intensive qualitative assessments to show this really mattered and looked international comparisons. This kind of let you know that, you know, you could start, you know, go give your depth of evidence in the UK. And that you could, you could identify some very objective measures of management practices that mattered. And anyway, so we ran a program with the UK Business Department in the UK called Business Basics, where we tried to tested a load of different types of, well, we didn't test them. We, we opened up the challenge of improving management practices to lots of delivery partners who came all around a set of programs. And the people that kind of just trying to nudge people, there was people trying to kind of deliver training, mentoring, some funding programs, vouchers and various different types of support. If you're interested, it's called Business Basics, if you're able to find it, I won't talk a lot about it now in the interest of time, but I'll just pick out a few little elements. So one of them, I think, that Reese pulled up was this one, which I found very interesting about how do businesses make decision? How do they do analysis? Where do they look for evidence? And I think this is really fascinating, one because of how few do little or none, but also that, you know, some of the elements of it, you know, the forecasting model and so on. So this is really interesting. Now, one of the experiments that was done for the Business Basics program was kind of taking this and taking it and then going back a bit, bit further. And it was trying to say, it's not just about, again, this idea of it's not what you do, it's where you do it. Let's train these businesses to to think about using analysis in decision making. So they set up a randomized control trial. This is Professor Ellen Develly at the Bayes Business School in London. And they got the businesses in and everybody got this kind of curriculum teaching them about how to do decision making. So this is how you do it, this is where you get evidence from, there's a business case and so on. So they, they were taught, I guess, elements of this. But then one group, the treatment group, was told to do it much more scientifically. They were taught about kind of hypothesis testing, about data collection and a bit more detailed data analysis. And what they found with that was actually that there's an impact on how effectively the treatment group made decisions, how quickly, decisively, and also on their growth rates. And then this has been such an experiment that was kind of like first done in Italy, then it was done in business, and then business based in the UK. And now they're kind of testing a few other countries. And this is kind of what I mean about sometimes small changes can make a difference in how things are implemented. Yeah. Anyway, so it's a really interesting study, that one. And then through that, from other stuff, there's various other bits and pieces that you might want to look at in terms of delivering support from kind of peer learning groups offering more than just kind of holistic support, the idea that you could try and encourage people to see themselves as growth, see themselves as being a good manager, maybe. And thinking about they, they are the kind of person that could be in some of these practices. Anyway, lots of other kind of stuff that I won't go into now, but lots of ideas. And so my reflections, so Nesta certainly points to the evaluation challenge as well. And you can see that there are, they do these practices, if you're out there trying to deliver a program, you're trying to evaluate the impact of a training program. And you can see the evidence there that those who are better managed are more likely to be using these programs and more likely to come forward. How do you control for that? And not only those practices, even if you measure those practices, there's other elements behind it as well. There's the, I use more like to use evidence, more like to have networks, more like to engage other people. Eliminating that selection bias is a real challenge. That's part of the reason why, well, some of these are randomized control trials, it would be difficult otherwise, but not impossible if you could improve the measurement. And anyway, there's kind of those other things around kind of like the timelines and the impacts as well. If you're then looking to measure this, sometimes those management practices, if you deliver them, you deliver the change. It takes a while for that to feed through and be adopted by the business, and then it takes a while for that to feed through into productivity. And I think in a sense, we're still trying to work out exactly what those timelines are from, you know, if the things in those management expectations service, they change behavior. How long does it take to feed through? And I think then maybe the final one I just say is the self-assessments. It's really powerful that this has got objective measures of small businesses and large as well, that link to productivity. That's difficult to do. And I think if you probably ask them to rate themselves, and I think this is the stuff that John van Reunen and Nick Bloom have done. Those self-assessments don't have a correlation. I ran a survey where we did self-assessment, so they didn't have any correlation with productivity outcomes. It's interesting to know what the self-assessments were, but anyway, but I think that's really powerful. And but then that makes it a challenge for when you're doing other research or trying to do targeting. So, yeah. And but overall, I would say, kind of, as I say, there's this challenge of how do you get from, this is important, we want to do something about it. How would you move through? So I guess this, you know, I would say that, okay, this has got better evidence, we can get better evidence. But actually, we also need to be thinking about how are we going to use this evidence to then enact change? And some of that is trying to take the evidence from the survey, put it into the wild, into delivery, feed it back and back and forth and create these kind of feedback loops and experimentation. And then I think that'll get us even more effective policies afterwards. But this is obviously really important survey, and it's great to see you, it's great to see it out there, and it'd be great to see it for the users as well. Yeah, absolutely.
I think Nicola, Nicola Pipe from the Productivity Institute is next.
Thanks, Grant. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Yeah. Brilliant. Super. Get the tech right to start with. So hello, everyone, and welcome to Manchester. This is the home of the Productivity Institute. We are an ESRC funded research institute, so headquartered here, but partnership between a number of academic institutions across the UK. I'll go through that a bit later on. So first of all, I love this survey, really, really, really love this survey. Why? Because it allows me to talk to our stakeholders and people we're trying to communicate with about better business practice and improving their practice in their business turns the dial on productivity. And that's what we're all about as an institute. I'm just going to pick up on one area of the survey, because there's so much to choose from, but I'm going to pick up on one. The improvement in scores and Reese talked about how it's been driven by employment practices. So it clearly shows that there's an area of focus that we need to take, you know, in terms of communicating. And that's about KPIs or key performance indicators and targets. And actually, that picks up a bit about what James is talking about. It's about analysis of data, isn't it? And those people who really track, monitor, have that data, collect the information, study it and use it for forecasting, they're going to perform better. For us, this links into a piece of work that we're using, where the MES has absolutely influenced the Productivities Institute's work and will continue to do so. It became very evident to us that a lot of the factors within the MES are those factors that are about strategy and the business's strategy. And so we've developed this project called Strategic Productivity for the Leadership Team. Because this is one of the elements, there are many other elements, you know, business leaders in that boardroom should be talking about marketing and communications. Because we know that brand has an impact on productivity. We know that firms that communicate effectively are better. They need to talk about finance. Just previously, we had Catherine Mann talking about investments, so that's a big factor. Innovation and digital worker skills and wellbeing, leadership and management. So they're all factors that that boardroom should be talking about. But let's focus on the MES and the particular areas today. So that's a project that we're working on at the moment, and we have a number of sub-projects as part of that as well. We commissioned fourteen small projects last year, just a sample of them here, but they do link into some of those elements that have come out of the MES. They will probably be released about September time, but what have we got there? Digital marketing productivity, leaders entrepreneurial mindset, AI powered knowledge management systems for care homes, strategic roadmaps, innovation pathways, performance indicators. So some really exciting things that are coming up. Another project that we're working on, still in its very early days. But again, this is where the MES has really influenced the work. The big number one reason for people not being able to do these things is time. And this comes out time and time again. You know, some people talk about it as make a time versus manager time. So what we're doing with the Behavioral Insights team, some will notice the nudge unit and be the business and organization that specifically helps SMEs with productivity, is we're seeing can gamification help? You know, many of you will be familiar with apps like Duolingo. I use a Peloton and it encourages me to just do a bit of cycling every day, that nudge factor and competing against myself and others. But can we use those tools and tactics to nudge these entrepreneurs, these business leaders, these managers to make the time? Because everyone can make the time, clearly those businesses that do this well make the time. How can we get those people to just nudge them into fifteen minutes a day, which turns into half an hour a day to an hour a day? You know, to do that best practice stuff. So that's something that will be coming out later this year as well, which I think is really exciting. You know, so again, what are we trying to overcome? Many of the barriers that have been identified in the MES. You know, they don't have the time, so we're starting with that fifteen minutes a day. They don't know how, you know, we talked about how those really good leaders and managers read management papers and journals and then they do look outside of their own organization. So we're trying to encourage that. And they don't see the value. Again, using the MES is a really good way to demonstrate and allow them to benchmark, which is one of the the real plus points of that. The Productivity Institute, as I said, is comprised of a number of different partners. So from Glasgow, Belfast and Cardiff, representing the three devolved nations. And then here, Manchester in the northwest, Sheffield in Yorkshire, Humber in the northeast, Warwick in the Midlands, Cambridge in East Anglia and King's College London in London. And for each of those, from the outset as the institute, we set up regional productivity forums to bring together local policymakers, local business leaders and academics to see what we could do locally for productivity. And again, love the fact that the MES breaks down into that regional element, so we can show people how are you performing against the benchmarks in the rest of the country. For me, it's about, you know, this great survey that the ONS produces. How do we communicate that? Because actually, you know, it's, it's no good if we're all talking about it and no one else is. We want to get more people understanding this is what good looks like, this is what you, we need you to do, you know. James already mentioned how important productivity is for the wealth and prosperity of the nation. And we need people to understand the connection between that, you know, they're frustrated with the potholes. Well, if we improve productivity, we'll improve UK potholes. So through those forums, we've been communicating the messages here. And I'm going to give you one specific example, delighted that Northern Ireland is now part of this. But despite the fact that they weren't previously, they still copied your survey and did their own last year. And they've been doing a fantastic job in communicating locally about what good looks like and continue to do so. So that's a really good example of what we've been doing. The other thing we're doing is national awareness. So believe it or not, until last November, there had been no national awareness campaign about productivity in the UK since nineteen sixty-three. So we changed that last year with the very first National Productivity Week. And we are doing it again in January twenty twenty five, because there might be an election this year. But I hope you'll all join me in spreading the word about productivity in January twenty twenty five. But that's all I've got to say. Love the survey and love communicating about it. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nicola. Last of our panelists is Alexander Assad from the Tony Blair Institute for Global Change. Alexander?
Thank you.
Please come up. And then Q and A.
We're focused so far very much on the private sector, given that this is the survey that you have released. For my contribution, I'm going to try and provide a little bit of a bridge to the next survey, the public sector survey with a piece of work that I've been leading at TBI over the past few months, looking at what are the opportunities for artificial intelligence in the public sector specifically? And what can governments do to encourage better adoption? What are some of the benefits that we can see? Why is this an important topic? Why is this an important topic? And let me sort of preface this a little bit to say, I am not an economist. My most relevant economic credentials, academic credentials here are in history of science. This is a qualitative piece of work. But the reason I think it's important to start talking about this here is because these types of changes are likely to have an impact on what you measure, how you measure it, and how do we ensure that we are on track and doing what we need to do? So in the private sector, and we've seen this with the MES as well, there is growing interest in AI. And in particular, we can see massive investment into infrastructure. Now, AI is a general purpose technology and it can take time for the impacts of that to diffuse. But where we see a significant difference for AI relative to previous waves of general purpose technologies. So a lot of that infrastructure has already been developed. It's a matter of building it. We've got the internet, we've got compute, we've got, we know how to build data centers. And so we can see large firms in particular beginning to invest more and more into that necessary infrastructure with 15 billion US dollars just last year alone from the top five cloud providers being invested into AI specific chips with 250 billion in commitment into data centers with 100 billion each from Microsoft and Google alone. And total corporate investment in AI companies is almost exceeding, not quite, but almost exceeding 1 trillion. And the big risk is that the public sector, for whatever reason, lags in its adoption. So if we see the private sector now investing more and more into AI and recognizing the opportunity and the risk of not taking that opportunity, we as an institute really want to see the public sector follow suit. Because at a time of really strained public finances, the types of benefits that AI can produce in the public sector really should not be left on the table. So some signals that we can see here are within Downing Street, number 10. There is now a really active, really high quality team working on how can we experiment with AI more? And they are finding that there are use cases where they're trying to see how can AI improve productivity a little bit? Where can we see investment returns of two to three times? But they're seeing 200, 150. And there are many estimates now floating around of productivity benefits to the public sector. IPPR is 24 billion a year. That is, seen some figures. And we will also be producing our own analysis that this may be the lower bound of those benefits, assuming that the technology is diffused and taken up. I think it's also important to recognize that the cost of experimentation is actually quite low. So what we talk about a lot with AI is compute is expensive. And these chips, as we've seen on the previous slide, are expensive. But much of the cost goes into the initial models. The actual application of models to the use cases can be incredibly cost effective. And looking at central government departments, a backlog of 250 case, 250,000 cases in one particular area, indeed, that will be P, could be cleared in 10 months based on similar productivity achievements in the private sector. That's an extra cost in terms of the compute required to process those cases, to prioritize them of less than 100,000 pounds to get rid of a backlog that has been growing over the past year. And then finally, it also improves practices within the public sector. And going back to one of the themes of the talks here today, terms of data analysis, it can really speed up those tasks. So we think that essentially, if there is the right type of focus, the right type of investment, we will see two main waves of progression of AI in the public sector. The first one would focus on adapting existing technologies and scaling them within similar contexts. So one example of this might be in the NHS where you won't have some hospital trusts that are already at the leading edge of what is possible to achieve. If we're able to scale that type of impact across other trusts and if we can address the main barriers to that type of adoption, the impact can be really, really significant. But by addressing those barriers, we would also put in place the foundations for a much deeper transformation of the public sector, of central government capacity. And we think that at this point in time, that is really a necessity. So what are some of those types of tasks where we think AI is likely to have a really significant impact over the next few years? It's really hard to fit this onto one slide, if I'm honest. And if we looked at a set of tasks where we can see artificial intelligence, whether the newer generative models or more traditional narrow models and what they can do across those different tasks. And all of those tasks, there are lots and lots of them. I told you this was going to be qualitative, but we can look at, you know, how can we triage and prioritize information as it comes into, let's say, government departments? Or how can we triage and prioritize patients as they come into hospitals? How can we automate decisions, allocate decisions to people who have the capacity and the expertise to make those decisions? How can we speed up analysis? How can we change the way that we target communications to citizens? How can we improve services with better targeting, better forecast demand and match it? How can we use AI itself to address the potential for bias? Because when designed well, AI systems can actually be more accurate and be less biased, can provide a greater sense of fairness. And we looked at some of those examples of AI in use today, in the field, in the UK context. And what could we see in terms of productivity improvements if you scale those more widely? So one example of this is in a hospital trust in Wales. We have seen AI systems being used to make better decisions around admissions and discharges, achieving a 35% reduction in delayed hospital discharges. We have seen social care providers use apps to monitor the health conditions of patients in their care and reduce hospitalizations by 52%. If you take these two types of impacts and combine them rolled out across the current NHS system, you could reduce bed occupancy by eight to 10%. So that, if we were able to achieve something like this, if we're able to achieve half of that, that would be transformational. If we're able to achieve this type of impact, then we would go back to about 85% bed occupancy, which we haven't seen since the early 2010s. If we look at some of the more repeatable tasks in the education sector, lesson planning, marking, data entry, we could save teachers 12 hours a week by cutting those from the current 25% of the workload that it takes up. 12 hours a week is what a teacher on average works in overtime. So we are potentially looking at an education sector where overtime is no longer required to meet the needs of schools as they currently are. I've already mentioned the backlog case. And one other example is by summarizing and analyzing consultation responses, we would be able to save central government about 65 million a year by cutting those consultation costs by 80%. But most importantly, really speeding up the way, that, that process of analyzing information as it comes in, therefore enabling much faster decisions. Obviously, this is not going to happen with a wave of a magic wand. And one of the things that we've really looked at is some of the choices and some of the barriers that exist. And one that I would really like to mention is interoperability of data. It is possible to build AI systems on what already exists. Not everything needs to be interoperable. But I think projects like the integrated data platform from the ONS are going to be really, really key to making this happen. And if we're able to invest into that type of interoperability, that is actually going to have a greater impact than investment into legacy infrastructure, which is where a lot of the conversation currently is focused. We need to be thinking about how do we meet the computing requirements of an AI enabled public sector? And some projections suggest that that AI specific workload within data centers are growing 33% year on year. So current assessment is about 8% of data center workload is driven by AI. That means that within the next five years, that could grow to 15%, which is quite significant. Depending on what is that we want the systems to do? There are decisions about whether the government builds some systems themselves or whether they use procurement to bring in what already exists out there or to work with external partners to create systems that are fit for purpose. And that means decisions on, do we need to train our own large language models as the UK public sector? Or can we use, in other cases, what already is out there? But also hopefully quite significant changes to how we procure this type of technology. And finally, there is a massive, massive skills and culture issue. And in particular, the need to attract AI talent where at the moment roles in the public sector for these really highly technical skills can pay five times less than what these same people would be making in the private sector. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we need to absolutely match those salaries. But at some point, that differential becomes quite significant. And we also need to think about how do we train people within the public sector to use these technologies better to encourage diffusion? So with all of that, I will leave you with sort of our vision of if the next government, whoever they are, really embraces this agenda and addresses those barriers, invests into identifying opportunities for AI across central government, across the public sector. What might we see? We might see really transformational changes in how government engages with citizens and with service users. We might have digital assistants that provide recommendations on services that people are able to access that might provide financial support and advice in a much more proactive manner and highly personalized communication, including, just to take a couple of examples, it might be things around languages, whether that's languages in Wales or Scotland, whether that's languages for minority communities. It might also be questions around accessibility. My son is autistic and one of the things that I'm really excited about is these types of systems can generate visual stories on the fly from text, which for a child with autism can be a really helpful way of understanding what to expect if they're going into a hospital for an ear appointment or if they're going to meet a new teacher. We can make those much more commonplace. In terms of operations, this is where typically most of the consultation focuses in terms of automating paperwork, automating back office activities, potentially even automating Freedom of Information Act requests. And we've seen some local authorities already using AI to triage requests and to say, well, we have an answer to that. We've provided it before, so we can direct you to that answer already. But if we use a larger number of open data sets, if we're able to address those requests automatically flagging the more complex or the more sensitive ones for humans to work with, that could be in itself really important for the public sector. And something that I kind of, listening to the previous presentations really struck me is this idea that in order to improve practices, we need more time. If these systems start to free up time for people, one of the things they can do is they can start thinking much more carefully about the practices that they employ and how to improve them. So maybe that's part of the downstream impact of AI on productivity here. And finally, and hopefully this will be dear to ONS colleagues, using data much more effectively and using much more up to date data to make better decisions. And one of the changes that we envision that is technically possible with the right amount of investment is thinking about how do we bring together data from across different data sets in a dynamic environment? So that you can simulate the impacts of a policy decision, so that you can generate 20 scenarios in half an hour rather than four scenarios in three weeks, as is often the case in the public sector today. And that means experimentation is going to proceed at much, much greater pace because we're able to assess the impact of these interventions on the fly. So just to kind of leave you with, with, with some thoughts on what does this all mean for measurement? I'm not an economist, as I said at the beginning, and I'm really curious about if this does come to pass in, you know, some shape or form, how do we capture not just the kind of output improvements, but the improvements in quality of services that this provides, improvements in the experience of engaging with public sector organizations? How do we capture new ways of working? We have a current set of tasks, but those tasks, you know, are about write an email, not use an AI co-pilot to write an email. Do we need to look at how we describe these types of tasks? How can we be much more proactive in updating those, those lists? And finally, as I kind of mentioned, what are some of those downstream impacts and how can we measure them? We have a paper coming out on Monday and you will see much, much more of this in there. But thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Alexander. Okay, we've got a bit of time for questions. I think about 20 minutes. So again, I'm going to start off with questions in the room and then we'll see if there are any onsite. So if anyone's watching this online, please feel free. Let's start with the chapter in the middle there.
Okay, thank you. Thomas Streeps, Love Bro University. I think this is all very fascinating stuff. You know, I work at a business school and we try to help businesses improve their productivity. But one thing is interesting, when we do all this, we assume that businesses want to improve productivity. And, you know, I think Nick Bloom and others have provided some fairly robust evidence that that's not necessarily the case for all businesses. Is there any evidence for the UK on this?
And so I suppose businesses normally probably want to improve. It's whether they want to improve with what you're offering. And I think there's a lot of the evidence, if you look at the history of lots of the, particularly, you know, as policymaking, policy interventions, many of the policy interventions, when they try and deliver, struggle to recruit the businesses at the speed and scale that they expected the interest to be. And I think that's kind of throughout time, lots of the kind of the, it takes time to kind of build up momentum and, and awareness and get people to come forward. And I think it's also surprising sometimes how little use the businesses make of the contact points they already have. So they'll often take advice from, well, their employees that could give them advice, their customers, their suppliers, their accountants. And I think some of the research has shown that actually they don't always ask the people, they don't even know that they could ask those people for that advice. I think there's kind of, there's often the kind of like an interest and want to improve. But I think it's maybe like, how do they take the next step to improve and take a particular type of support? Yeah. And I think then look at some of that stuff where the self-assessed area. I think this management skills is one area where the, I think the evidence is that they overrate themselves and they think that they're better. Or if they don't think they're better, there's, they feel there's like some sort of distance from the businesses who the next level business, they don't see themselves being like that. And that's another kind of hindrance. So yeah. But yeah, so there's lots of evidence around it and observations of the difficulty of programs. And then what to do about it is a challenge.
Anyone else want to have a go?
Yeah, I, I think this is why the MES and communicating the results is really important. As James mentioned, lots of businesses don't realize that they're not as good as they think they are. And if we give them the tools to actually benchmark themselves, which you can do from the MES results, that might become an eye opener and make them appreciate what good looks like and encourage them to then strive for excellence. But I think you will always have businesses that, you know, they're there for lifestyle purposes or, you know, they're, they're happy where they are. But let's focus on the ones and try and turn up the dial on the ones who have the potential and the willingness to improve.
Okay, thank you. Question right up at the back.
Thanks, Sonia Carver Roy. Nice. Really interesting findings. A couple of questions, one for Alexander. And first of all, a pledge to connect after these because we're working on the public sector productivity review and part of that is looking at AI. And what you presented chimes quite consistently with what we've found so far. But we're planning to do research with businesses as well and alongside the public sector management practices survey. So it would be really interesting to exchange ideas. The question is around development and learning for the public sector regarding AI. Some of what we found was that it's not only the technical skills, but also the understanding of the ethical implications of using AI, which is a barrier. Is it something that you found? And did you get any evidence of what would be most effective to overcome that barrier? And then a question for James about the use of qualitative research in relation to management practices. We're planning to do that for the public sector one, but we haven't really thought about using it in the private sector. Is it something that you think would be useful to bring up some of the evidence that you were talking about? Thank you.
Try your first. Thank you. And yes, would absolutely. And yes, would absolutely love to speak to you and anyone from your team about this a bit more on the ethics. It's obviously a matter of concern. It is something that is addressable. And as I said, when these systems are designed well, they can actually be fairer. They can help address bias that already exists in public sector organizations on occasion. In terms of effectiveness, I think the government is already doing quite a lot on this. So within the Department of Science, Innovation and Technology, there are teams that have done a lot of work on algorithmic transparency. And to me, sort of the next step from there would be to make that work really accessible to the layperson. But almost circularly, this is where, again, AI can actually help. Because if you look at the current algorithmic transparency standard, it's quite lengthy, it is quite technical. But you can use a generative AI tool to summarize that and to answer citizens' questions about this type of information. I think the other element of this is how do we connect what AI does to the actual benefits? So it's a less abstract thing. It's not AI, it's I get better services because I get seen by a doctor within four hours in A and E, not within twelve hours, as might be the case at the moment. And that's where it is a general purpose technology that does need to be applied thoughtfully and where government has a role to play in setting out those standards. But ultimately, it is about the impact much more than it is about the tech itself. But in in the forthcoming paper, we'll be talking about some of the principles that we think should be informing the use of AI in government and the fact that it should be predictable, it should be explainable, there should be human accountability at every step. It should be reversible and sensitive to individual circumstances.
Yeah. And on the qualitative research, I think, yes, it can be really informative in many different ways. There was a, when I used to kind of commission research myself, had a colleague who was very interested in looking at this, we call it the sociology of enterprise, like how do people, business leaders, kind of set their ambition and see themselves or influences them and so on. And I was, I was less than convinced at the time, but when they did the research, it was fascinating. And it was really interesting and got us thinking about other things around what sets ambition, how it changes over time. And so that was really informative, but just kind of thinking about through the problem where it works. And I think when we come through the impact evaluations, I worked on a study one time where the business didn't see much of an impact on what the business was doing. And the qualitative interviews alongside it kind of told us it made them take a step back and think more strategically. So it was almost a bit like they were doing less because they were, they were trying to shift from chasing everything to be more strategic and our quantitative survey hadn't really thought about that. So it was just, oh, they seem to be doing a little bit less. And again, this is kind of like thinking through the theory of change and observing it and seeing how it actually works on the ground and the impact. There's another paper I want to read on the train on the way back that I've been reading for a long time. That's the study by Misham Miller, I think, at the New York Business School, anyway. It's about kind of observing very closely some businesses that were receiving support and how they responded differently to just kind of overall strategies to things that were personalized and targeted at them. And it was easier to dismiss the things that were kind of just kind of generic business school structuring stuff to this is tailored to your area and now respond to. Anyway, I haven't read it yet so properly, so I don't want to say any more than that, because I probably entirely miss reference it. But yes, anyway, it can be really important, really. And then to try and tie the two together, because the stuff that the quality research can't do, that the quant and the can do and the similar, the correlation type stuff can do that then you want to do some experiments, test cause and impact and outcomes. But yeah.
Thank you.
One more from the room and then we'll go to Slido.
Thank you. This is a question for Alexander. I'm interested in your view because you're a non-economist and most businesses would also be non-economists as well. Suppose in five years' time, our colleagues at the O N S set up a language model so people can go and look at the results that we produce in the evidence and disseminate it. Do you, do you envisage businesses being more, the business community to be a lot more receptive to the insights they glean from AI as opposed to other channels like our own communications?
First, I'd love for that to be the case. So if you're working on it, please continue to do that. I think by itself, it wouldn't be enough in the sense that just a tool being available is not a sufficient intervention to diffuse better practice. But having much more easily accessible sources of information and maybe to that point also personalizing that information in really clear ways, I think, is going to have an impact on how businesses engage with this type of insight. But also, you know, does this mean that as part of the work that they would do analyzing this data, they would look at what are the labor market conditions locally and therefore get better insight into that? They would look up at what is the demand for that type of product or service across the country? Is there more of that type of data that we can sort of make available, almost like a business coach? And I've worked in education technology for quite, quite a long time now. And something I have always found most effective in that field is when you take high-quality practices and you embed them into the tools. And so the tools almost provide the guardrails for you to do what you are, what you should be doing. I don't want to be too prescriptive, but what, you know, what you can expect to be effective? Because that's the methodology that's built into the tool. And so if you're able to provide tools that help businesses identify the right information at the right point of their life cycle, I think that could have real impact on how they engage with them and on their productivity.
Maybe just add on that, there's, there's some work that says a research colleague from Moloch who kind of talks about the AI and it's like this jagged edge. And it's amazing that some things are really bad at things that surprise you. And there's some research team at Harvard Business School and other places, a guy called Rem Conig has done some work looking at developing a business advice tool, an AI business advice tool for businesses, and they were piloting it out there. And what they found actually is it benefited the people at the top more than those at the bottom of the management skills and so on. And it's because they were had, they were better at framing the questions that AI was going to be good at answering. And, and, and that's why they got more benefit from it. And I mean, I thought that was a really fascinating thing about kind of like how there could be, whereas in other studies, it shows that the AI tools help those at the bottom. And I think the one difference that they are kind of speculating on this is that a lot of these issues that are trying to measure the impact of productivity, do it with abstract tasks outside the real world, a task given to you, try and perform this task with or without AI. So the task is defined and your performance is the variable. Whereas this one, the AI intervention tool, you're, you are also thinking about the question you're going to ask it. And that adds another variance into it. Anyway, so I thought that was quite an interesting study to look at.
Thank you. Now, we do have, I think, another question from Slido, let me just find it. Okay. One for all the panel, what policy or intervention would have the greatest impact on improving management practices? Who wants to go first? What's your one big idea?
Wow. I mean, I, it feels like it would have to be. So there's kind of things like influence people is like, there's the stuff that goes on within the business. Then you've got the kind of the customers and the suppliers and the environment. And it feels like the things that could influence through the environment, the market, legislation, and more the broader education system is going to have the biggest impact because they're more scalable and it has to be, it has to be quite direct. So there are certain things that could be like the way that, you know, H M R C asked for its accounts or things like that, which kind of like is a contact point. If you start kind of like changing the technologies there and it kind of norms things, that's going to have an influence. So I don't know what the solution is, but I'll be looking at things that are about the environment where you kind of contact them. Now, I'd also, there'd be, that that might be softer intervention points and you might get a more bigger impact if you can be very targeted. But I would probably try and see what can I do at the environment first. But I've copped out now, so everybody else has to answer better.
I'm not sure if I'll meet that bar. What I was really struck by in the M E S is the very low take-up of the government-funded training programs. And what that suggests to me is that we think a lot about supply in training, but maybe not enough about demand. And so for me, a really effective intervention here would be thinking hard about why is the take-up so low? What are the needs that are not being met by the current provision? And how can we reach the business in the, and how can we target this? How can we be more proactive in meeting them at the point where they need this training? So that it feels immediately relevant to, yeah, help them to take it up.
I'll, I'll just pick up on that and take up of government interventions and services. In the Productivity Institute, we've done a lot of research about policy churn and fragmentation. And the business support landscape is no exception. And I talk to hundreds of businesses a year through our regional productivity forums. And right from the outset, they've said the same thing. They don't know because there are so many different options. They don't know where to turn to. And for me, that is a communication and engagement issue. And we do so many good things in the UK, but we don't make it easy for anyone. And so having some policy around having stability, having a recognizable brand, that for me would would be probably the biggest win over anything. You know, maybe we need something like the NHS for business, you know, that brand. And regardless of all of the issues and things, everyone in the UK recognizes that NHS brand. If you, you know where to go to, and maybe that's what we need.
I guess it was kind of like going back, because I was done, sorry. There used to be kind of like the business link and then the solutions for business, all this kind of stuff. And I guess it's the trade-off between the brand with the innovation. So actually, maybe just from, if I was coming from my angle, rather than the other, I would be thinking like some alongside that maybe is then is the idea, some sort of this experimentation from a bit like the business basics, but bigger, better and a proper pipeline. And the idea being, and one of the problems is you need to try new ideas, you need innovation, but you need to actually scale the ones that work. And it's a big, complex problem. So you need something that is kind of whilst you're trying to got a big solution that's going, you've got some kind of pipeline that says, this is a new idea. And it's not just a new idea, it's a new idea that's tested, proved. And there's enough evidence out there that should spread rather than just it sounds cool or whatever else it is. It's like, it's like, it's been proven. So, yeah, so, yeah. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have a go. Well, you can hedge the O N S and not a policy department. So it's not something you have to think about often. But thinking about it from a different angle, it would be looking at some of the regression results and thinking about how do you change the composition of firms so that you get more of a better managed firms? So some kind of policy to support younger firms who we think are better as opposed to older firms and support in getting younger firms to scale quickly. I think there's, we're a resolution foundation have picked up on this. So, yeah, and it's an easy plug for our business dynamism publications as well.
And I, I probably have a go in that I think it's fairly widely accepted to you, I think, in the UK that pressing that long tail of poor management practices. In other words, lifting below average firms up close to the median is probably going to have more overall aggregate impact than getting the already good firms to be great or more at the cutting edge. Having said that, there's obviously a case for encouraging innovation and cutting-edge kind of methods as well. And in terms of business support, I mean, the Department of Business has run various surveys over the years around kind of take-up and lack of awareness is a fundamental issue and has been for some time. And of course, having a proliferation of schemes run by different organizations with different criteria doesn't make any use of it. But maybe in the world of AI, we can set up our own little AI agents. They can go around and find things that you might be eligible for. And every week, tell the manager of an organization is some schemes that you might be interested in, that might, might be useful. And as part of that also, I think there is a real role for benchmarking, just seeing how you compare with your peers. And that's something where I think this survey can be quite useful, actually, not just in the private sector, but also potentially when we did the public sector management one. Within schools, within the NHS, how do you compare to other trusts, how do you compare to other schools? What are they doing that you're not doing? I think even just sharing that information could potentially have a positive productivity impact.
I've got some, colleagues at Nest are working on the heat pump thing. And the idea is you can go out and visit someone who's got a heat pump and see how it goes. So maybe kind of like this is where recently give us the names and numbers. If you can only do not benchmark it, but then you can kind of like go, go and talk to this person because they're great in your area. It's like, then you can find out how they do it and get the personalized support. But, yeah.
And it's something the NHS already does. So they have the Get It Right First Time program, which essentially does this across a very, very large number of data points, identify which other hospital trusts are like yours and show you, you know, you're paying way more for your electricity bills or your hip replacements happen fifteen percent more slowly. And how can you talk to your peers to improve? So, yeah, I definitely agree with that.
Okay, we've got time for one more question, I think. Yes.
Thanks. So, yeah, we spoke a bit about the barriers to good management. Something that we didn't really cover so much was culture. And that's not just sort of, I guess, culture within a firm, but maybe even comparing to other countries, UK culture, culture across the country. But that's obviously, and also across time. So I guess like we've gone from before COVID, everyone working in the office or more or less to people sometimes now not even ever meeting their manager in person. So is there any sort of measurement or evidence to like show how culture plays into like changes in management practices, but also, I guess, differentials across the country and maybe comparing the UK to other countries?
I think, yes. There is some, I mean, just in terms of like the adaptability, there is something, you know, the M E S survey showed, I think, for COVID, that the better managed businesses were able to faster adapt and so on. And then I think there is the, I mean, I think the culture is some of the harder things to measure. But you've got some of that in the, the, I mean, there's some stuff around kind of innovation, about the openness, inclusiveness of innovation and who you involve, your customers, your suppliers, your, your employees and just having that. There's the kind of the culture in terms of entrepreneurship as well as, you know, and, 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 and you can see that at different levels. And there's some kind of, look at the GEM survey, sorry, Global Entrepreneurial Monitoring Survey looks at levels of entrepreneurship. And what you're finding that actually the levels of entrepreneurship doesn't really matter so much productivity and probably I can hear somebody shouting at me, but anyway, the, 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 the levels of entrepreneurship doesn't matter quite so much. It's when you put entrepreneurship plus entrepreneurship that really get the links to productivity, because in some places people will spin out and create their own business. Others, they do it inside the business because the culture allows you to do it. So you have to kind of think about both levels. But you can change the culture in organizations about how you collect ideas and generate ideas and reach out. Yeah, there's lots of stuff. I think some stuff as well that does, that happens isn't beneficial, so there are, it does not. Anyway, and then also in targeting the support, we ran some, some of those experiments we helped run or helped support. We're international and you get different levels. So in some countries, businesses want to know exactly what they're going to get before they signed up. And once they got that, they then did the support. Whereas it seemed in the UK, lots of people would sign up. And then when it came to turning up, they go, oh, no, I don't fancy that. And then they drop out. So there's kind of different levels in translate, you know, in translation, it was really quite fascinating.
In our productivity forums, this comes up time and time again from our business leaders, especially those who are part of multinationals, but also those who have offices or factories in different parts of the UK. And there are cultural differences. Anecdotally, they would say in different parts of the United Kingdom as well. As James said, this is really difficult to work out, how do you actually measure and test that? I think it's breaking it down, you know, take for example, K P I's. It's a communication culture, one that inspires people to focus on the K P I's. You need to really drill down into different variants. And it's something we're looking at, but we've, we've not quite worked out how to measure that yet. But, but, yeah, you're right to pick it up because it does come up time and time again.
Thank you. I think that's the, that's the end of the panel. We're almost on time and we'll have the closing, short closing ceremony in a couple of minutes' time here in this venue. So you might want to stay around for that. But in the meantime, if you could thank all the panelists.